It's Monday, September 12th, 2022, the time is 6:02 PM. My name is Charles Gary, Deputy General Counsel of the Metropolitan Authority, also known as the MTA. I have been designated as a hearing officer for this public hearing. Joining us both in person for tonight's hearing and online are other staff members from the MTA and MTA Construction and Development, A. U. Neil Mastropedros, Deputy Director of Real Estate Transactions, Raymond Smike, Associate Director of Real Estate Transactions, Krung Nooyan. Nooyan, I'm sorry, Project Manager, MTA C and D. And Joe O'Donnell, who's sitting to my right, Director of Public Affairs, MTA C and D. So in addition to the in-person format of this public hearing tonight, we're also using Zoom's online platform and call-in features for those members of the public who are with us remotely. Everyone who wishes to speak at tonight's hearing has signed up in advance through the website provided on the hearing notice. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak but has not yet registered, you may do so by one of the three contactless registration options, by scanning the QR code for folks that are here in person, by scanning the QR code with your smartphone or device, by calling the public hearing hotline at 646-252-6777, or by using the iPad outside until 6:30 PM this evening. This is a public hearing pursuant to Article 2 of the New York State Eminent Domain Procedure Law. The topic of tonight's hearing is MTA's proposed acquisition of property interests that will be required in order for the MTA and MTA Construction and Development to undertake and complete various elements of the Jamaica Bus Depot Reconstruction Project, which I will refer to as "The Project." Under the United States and New York constitutions, the government has the right to acquire private property for public uses provided that the government pays just compensation for the property that it acquires. That power is called eminent domain or condemnation. MTA is a New York public benefit corporation that was created by the state legislature and has been granted the right to acquire property by condemnation for transportation projects like "The Project." The fact that we're holding a public hearing under the Eminent Domain Procedure Law tonight does not automatically mean that the MTA will condemn all property interests needed for this project. MTA hopes to acquire as many property interests as it can through negotiated agreements with property owners. However, MTA simply may not be able to reach agreements with some property owners and will be compelled to acquire those property interests by condemnation. New York law provides many rights and protections for owners whose property interests are acquired by condemnation, including the right to receive just compensation and to file claims for additional compensation. Tonight's hearing is the beginning, not the end, of that process. In each instance where an agreement is not reached with the property owner, MTA will provide additional notices and information to the owner prior to starting formal legal proceedings to condemn the required property interest. Hearing format. As required under the Eminent Domain Procedure Law, this hearing will inform the public about the project, particularly the work and property requirements for the construction, review the public use, benefit, and purpose to be served by the project and by the proposed property acquisitions, and describe the general impact on the environment and surrounding communities that the project will have. MTA published notice of this public hearing in the New York Daily News from August 25th through August 29th, 2022, as well as the Queens Chronicle in its August 25th, 2022 issue. MTA also mailed by certified mail and regular mail notices of this hearing to affected property owners in the project area, including easement holders and mortgagees. The hearing notices to property owners also contained a map indicating the proposed property interests to be acquired at each address sees location. MTA also notified public officials of tonight's hearing. This hearing is being recorded, and a transcript of the recording will be made. For those of you who have or wish to submit a written comment, I request that if you have not already submitted such a statement, you may do so by visiting, and for the Zoom folks, you should have that address on your screen, Or sending such statement by regular mail, addressed to MTA Government and Community Relations, referencing the Jamaica Bus Depot Reconstruction Project to Broadway, Room B20.81, New York, New York, 10004. The hearing notice also provided instruction for members of the public who are blind or low vision, deaf or hard of hearing, or require translation to contact the public hearing hotline at 646-252-6777 in advance of tonight's public hearing in order for MTA to provide accommodations. CART captioning and American Sign Language interpreters are available at this hearing. To access captioning at the bottom of the screen, this is for Zoom, select CC, and you will be able to turn on or enlarge the captions based on your preference. Users will not need to adjust their screens to see ASL. The ground rules for this hearing are as follows. First, I will make my presentation. Then we will call on each person who has registered to speak. For those registered speakers on Zoom, I just ask that each speaker when called upon allow 10 seconds for a brief transition, after which the speaker will be able to turn on their camera and unmute their microphone. We also will keep the record of this hearing open until 5:30 PM on September 23rd, 2022 for the purpose of receiving additional written comments. The nature and format of this hearing, as well as time constraints, do not permit me or other project representatives to answer questions raised by public speakers. But upon request, MTA can provide contact information for key personnel through MTA Construction and Development's community outreach team whom you may contact with any questions you may have after the hearing. And I also ask that all speakers limit their remarks to a time period of three minutes or less so that all registered speakers may be heard. Please note that an auditory signal will be played to alert the speaker when they have 30 seconds left to conclude their statement. Keep in mind that MTA will be accepting written comments until 5:30 PM on September 23rd, 2022, so that everyone will have a fair opportunity to have their comments made part of the hearing record. I would like to spend a few moments now to just generally describe the project. I can take a sip of water. The existing Jamaica Bus Depot, or JBD, is located at 165-18 Tuskegee Airmen Way in Jamaica, Queens. The site is bounded by Tuskegee Airmen Way to the north, Merrick Boulevard to the east, 107th Avenue to the south, and 165th Street to the west. JBD has remained in operation since its construction in 1939 and has served as a critical component of the Queens Division Bus Depot network. It's one of eight depots in Queens that provide storage and servicing of the Queens Division Bus Fleet. The project will both reconstruct and expand JBD for it to manage the operation, maintenance, and onsite storage for up to 272 standard bus equivalents, or SBE, S-B like boy, E, to serve current bus assignments and allow additional capacity for future surface transit demands in southeastern Queens. Key project elements. In addition to the 272 SBE capacity, the project plan also includes the construction of 15 maintenance days, one chassis wash station, three fueling lanes, three bus wash lanes, two interior bus wash stations, administrative space for maintenance and transportation divisions, adequate storage, space for equipment, as well as infrastructure to support the operation and maintenance of an entirely zero emission bus fleet with a minimum of 60 electric buses assigned to the depot immediately upon completion of this project. Since 1991, New York City Transit, a subsidiary of MTA, has investigated acquiring property to allow it to construct a new bus depot on a new site within the same service area as a replacement for the existing JBD. Throughout that period, New York City Transit identified 11 properties in Queens County that were reasonably expected to be of adequate size while also providing appropriate site roadway access. However, no alternative site was ultimately secured. The existing JBD site remains the only true viable option. The depot reconstruction having the advantage of already being owned by the MTA and being in a suitable location in terms of bus operations efficiency. However, the existing depot site presents several unique limitations as well. Most critically, any reconstruction of the JBD on the existing site would require the demolition and reconstruction activities be phased to ensure uninterrupted bus operations. The project entails the planning, design, and construction of a modern bus facility to service the surface transportation needs of southeastern Queens. With respect to the environmental review of this project, MTA was determined to be the lead agency under New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEQA, S-E-Q-R-A, responsible for conducting the environmental review for the project. Typically, the reconstruction of a transportation facility such as JBD is considered an exempt action under SEQA. However, because bus storage during construction will be located off-site, the project acted in accordance with SEQA. MTA issued its notice of intent to serve as lead agency on May 18th, 2016. MTA also issued a draft scoping document in the preparation for the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, on May 18th, 2016. A public scoping meeting was held on June 15th, 2016, and written comments were accepted through July 8th, 2016. A final scoping document reflecting comments made during the scoping period was issued to the public on March 13th, 2019. Thereafter, a draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, was published and public comments received. A public hearing covering the DEIS for the project was held on June 27th, 2019 and held open for an additional written comment period until July 19th, 2019. Substantive comments were received on the DEIS. Once the public comment period closed on the DEIS, MTA prepared a final environmental impact statement, or FEIS, which includes a summary and response to all substantive comments received on the DEIS. The FEIS for this project was published in September 2019, and it is available on MTA's website. The project location. As mentioned earlier, the project entails the reconstruction and expansion of the JBD, which is located at 165-18 Tuskegee Airmen Way in Jamaica, Queens. Large portions of this work for the project will take place on the existing depot site. However, some additional property is required for certain project elements. Design considerations will also be made to maximize efficient constructability to have the fewest impacts on existing operations. Note that tonight's public hearing covers the private property affected by this project. The design-build contract. It is anticipated by the MTA that a design-build contract will go before the MTA board later this year. The design builder will design and construct the new depot with the earlier project elements I discussed, including infrastructure support for the operation and maintenance of the 60 electric buses upon completion. The design-build project schedule. Currently, the projected award date for this contract is December 2022, with a estimated construction duration of approximately four years. Property acquisition needs. I will now describe the property acquisitions that will be required for this project. The specific location of each property interest that MTA is including in tonight's hearing is listed in the public hearing notice referenced earlier and in information that was previously mailed to each affected owner. The fee interests. There are six properties that are necessary to be acquired in fee to support the expansion of the JBD. These properties include Queens Block 10164, Lot 74, also known as 104.28, 28, Merrick Boulevard. Queens Block 10164, Lot 76, which is 104-32 Merrick Boulevard. Queens Block 10164, Lot 79, which is 105-02 Merrick Boulevard. Queens Block 10164, Lot 89, which is 105-22 Merrick Boulevard. And Queens Block 10164, Lot 90, which is 106-04 Merrick Boulevard. And finally, Queens Block 10164, Lot 95, with an address of 166-15107 Avenue. Partial temporary easements. For those of you who may not be familiar with the term, an easement is a right to use part of someone else's property for a stated purpose, such as for a work area or for a right of access. Easements may be either permanent or temporary in nature. This project requires 27 temporary easements in the rear yards of properties that abut the JBD at a depth of five feet from the property line for an estimated duration of 24 months. The purpose of the temporary easement is for a work area to support the construction of a 31-foot sound barrier wall that will be installed at the existing JBD property line. These properties include Queens Block 10164, Lot 5, which is 104-83 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 6, with an address of 104-81 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 7, which is 104-79 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 8, which is 104-77 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 9, which is 101-73 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 12, which is 104-69 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 13, with an address of 101-67 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 14, 104-65 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 15, 104-63 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 16, 104-59 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 17, 101-57 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 18, 104-55 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 19, 104-53 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 20, 101-51 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 21, 104-49 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 23, 104-45 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 24, 104-43 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 26, 104-41 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 27, 104-39 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 28, 104-35 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 29, 104-33 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 30, 104-27 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 31, which is 104-25 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 32, which is 104-23 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 34, 104-19 165th Street. Queens Block 10164, Lot 38, 104-15 165th Street. And finally, Queens Block 10164, Lot 39, 104-09 165th Street. This concludes my summary of the private property interests that MTA will need for this project. Although subject to change, MTA anticipates under the current project schedule that it will acquire the various property interests for the implementation of this project between late 2023 through the end of 2024. MTA will also discuss property acquisition and relocation requirements, benefits, and timeframes with all affected property owners and tenants, and will communicate updated information on scheduling when it becomes available. With respect to displacement and relocation, as the project design has advanced, the need for several businesses, commercial businesses, to be relocated has been identified. These businesses, which include tenants, may be eligible for relocation benefits and assistance under the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Act, or URA. MTA and its representatives will provide detailed information on such benefits to these businesses as the project progresses. The public use, benefit, and purpose of this project. As previously mentioned, the project will both reconstruct and expand JBD for it to manage the operation, maintenance, and onsite storage for up to 272 SBEs to serve current bus assignments and to allow for additional capacity for future surface transit demands in southeastern Queens, including the operation and maintenance of the electric buses. In addition to the larger fleet that will be supported out of the JBD location where a 200-bus fleet currently operates, the facilities where employees work to operate and maintain the buses will be brought up to the current industry standard. That includes modern relief and support facilities, which is an improvement over the antiquated conditions of the existing facility. The depot will also be built to better integrate into the community by placing all bus storage and operations internal to the depot behind sound barrier walls, which an improved streetscape along Merrick Boulevard and public art on the exterior wall of the building at that location. Additionally, the project benefits the public by providing a LEED certified building with green roof and architectural lighting and landscaping. Environmental impacts. As I discussed earlier, MTA issued its draft scoping document in preparation for its EIS on May 18th, 2016. Thereafter, a draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, was published in June 2019, and public comments were received. A public hearing for the DEIS for this project was held on June 27th, 2019 and held open for additional written comments until July 19th, 2019. Substantive comments were received on the DEIS. And once the project period closed on the DEIS, MTA prepared the FEIS, which includes a summary and response to all substantive comments from the DEIS. And again, the FEIS for this project was published in September of 2019. Summarizing the general environmental impacts of this project. A complete description of the environmental impacts for the entire project is set forth in the FEIS, which is incorporated herein by reference. And note again, the FEIS is available on the MTA's website. The project will take place largely within the existing JBD footprint and certain properties, abutting properties previously discussed. The JBD again is located at 165-18 Tuskegee Airmen Way in Jamaica, Queens, and therefore will result in adverse impacts only to a select number of environmental technical areas which MTA will make efforts to mitigate during the construction period. The FEIS analysis demonstrated that there would be no significant adverse environmental impacts that were unavoidable or unmitigable for the project's operating and construction condition. Construction activities for the proposed action would initially consist of demolition of the existing properties along Merrick Boulevard, the commercial properties, to make space for the construction of the new depot structure. Also, when the new JBD is completed, the existing JBD will be demolished. However, construction impacts are temporary and can include disruptive and noticeable effects for a project. The determination of the impacts, if any, and whether mitigation is required is generally based on the specific construction element or activity, its duration, and the magnitude of its effect or impact. Specifically, the EIS demonstrated the following construction-related effects or impacts for traffic, transit, pedestrian, parking, air quality, noise and vibration, socioeconomic conditions, historic and cultural resources, natural resources, and safety and security. Although there would be temporary and short-duration impacts during the construction phase of the JBD project, all efforts will be made to minimize, to the extent practicable, these impacts through mitigation and by ensuring the contractor abides by the MTA C and D and regulatory requirements to minimize the impacts. With respect to noise impacts, ambient noise levels may increase intermittently during construction. However, these noise increases would be minimized with strict adherence to the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, or NYCDEP, code requiring, with respect to noise preventative measures for those elements of the project identified to have an elevated impact. MTA C and D contract specifications would require the contractor to meet the requirements set forth in NYCDEP Noise Control Code and develop a noise mitigation plan for the project. Vibration impacts. There is a potential for damage to one structure located at 104-09 165th Street from vibration impacts because it's located within three feet of the construction zone. Also, the small garage structures located along 165th Street and certain properties near the construction activity would require implementation of vibration control measures to minimize, to the extent practicable, any vibration. Prior to construction, vibration would be monitored at all buildings within a 200-foot radius of the project. MTA, New York City Transit, and/or its contractors would be responsible for any vibration damage occurred during the construction period. With respect to the property acquisitions that I discussed earlier, within 90 days of the conclusion of this hearing, which is 90 days from September 23rd, 2022, the MTA board will make its determination and findings concerning the proposed acquisition of the property interest that I have described in tonight's hearing. MTA will publish a synopsis of this determination and findings and will provide a copy of the full determination and findings free of charge upon written request. Also, MTA will mail by certified mail a return receipt, copies of the determination and findings to all property owners affected by the project. copies of the determination and findings to all property owners affected by the project, including mortgagees. In addition, and upon request, a copy of the record of this hearing will be available electronically without charge. MTA has or, or will, in the near future, make written offers of just compensation to each property owner with a compensable interest in the property interests to be acquired. Where offers are made, those offers represent one hundred percent of MTA's highest-approved appraisal for that property interest. In accordance with the New York's, New York eminent domain procedure law, each property owner will have the option of accepting the offer as payment in full or accepting the offer as an advance payment reserving its rights to seek additional sums through negotiation or court proceedings. This concludes my prepared statement, and I thank you for your patience sitting through it. I will now turn this hearing over to Joe O'Donnell, Public Affairs Director at MTA CND.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us this evening. In order to permit speakers who have registered the opportunity to speak before the hour becomes too late, I ask that you limit your remarks to a maximum time limit of three minutes. I ask that each speaker, when called upon, will allow ten seconds of a brief transition to allow the speaker to turn on their camera and unmute their microphone. Please note that an auditory signal will be played to alert the speaker when they have thirty seconds left to conclude their statement. In the event that your name is called and you are not present, we will call your name again at the end of the list of pre-registered speakers. When you begin to speak, please provide your name and the affiliation you wish to announce so that we have it for the record. I would like to note that we have several virtual speakers who have pre-registered, who have not yet signed in to speak on the Zoom. So if you have logged into the Zoom meeting under a name that differs from that which you signed up to speak, please go on to the Q and A function and notify our team members what name it is that you have logged into the Zoom under so that they can turn your mic on and your video on when we call your name. We are going to start tonight's evening, uh, public comment portion of the evening with the folks who have joined us live here in person. The first speaker for tonight, and we would ask that you come and use the microphone here at the front of the room, is Dolores Sharp.
Okay, I think you can hear me. Good evening. Um, I'm the homeowner of one oh four thirty-nine, one six five street. I have lived there my entire life, born and raised, okay? Have gone through many a things with this MTA, from the buses traveling back and forth through a residential block, which we were successful in having that cease and desist. We had an unfortunate circumstance back in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, which was an oil spill onto our properties that the MTA did not notify us until a year after. To this day, I can still say that there's still oil running through all of our properties. So if now you're going to do this reconstruction or renovation or total demolition of the MTA, and you want to build up, why not build wide? Take all of our properties. You're taking the properties on Merrick. Take and offer us, as you said, just compensation. Just compensation, what we received in the letter, to me, that was just a mere pittance to the fact that we are vested in this neighborhood, in this community, in this property. And when you talk about the, the environment and what you have, uh, made plans for and so forth, but I didn't hear anything about rodents. And that's going to be a big issue because when you start digging down depths, you unearthen all sorts of things. So is that also something that's going to be taken in consideration as far as, you know, as well as with the vibration, as well as with the construction? And what hours are you talking about? And are you going to be able, how are you going to build this easement? If it is going to be a easement that you're going to build, you're going to come through our driveways? I, I mean, what, what property owner wants to have a house with no backyard? You, you, I have a garage, so you're going to take my entire garage? My garage is used for not just storing a car. I have other things in that garage. There are other people here who have their garages, their main, as their mainstay for their business. So you're really, this is really, really a major inconvenience and, and really a major problem for us residents on that block. And that's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Our next speaker this evening is Ruhaama Tasnim.
Uh, I live in one oh four fifty-three. My name's Ruhaama. And, uh, we need to know exactly what the start date and end date is, and we need to know if the compensation, um, if it takes longer, if we will receive additional compensation. And the compensation offered for the temporary easement is not sufficient. The offered compensation for full loss of my shed is not enough. We need to receive compensation for the cost associated with the labor for rebuilding our shed, not just for purchasing a new one. And three thousand dollars is not enough for the materials and labor. And currently, we have a lot of items in our shed that will require alternate storage. It is important for us to know, um, if we can get alternate storage or if we can get compensation so that we can get alternate storage. Also, we have a fence in our backyard. Uh, we need to be aware of all the potential damages that will be caused to the fence, and we need full compensation for all repairs that need to be made if the damage occurs. And we need a document outlining the compensation you are providing and the purpose before any work begins on the property. And we need to make repairs for any damages that were not mentioned beforehand. And, uh, we need, um, to be provided further compensation for those damages. Also, if the repairs require additional payments and the, uh, compensation does not require, cover it, then we need, uh, more compensation.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rihanna Ma-Marin.
Uh, my name is Rihanna, and I also live in one oh four fifty-three. So in the final environmental impact statement, you mentioned that for each candidate alternative, a ten-foot-wide temporary easement would be required on the adjoining one sixty-fifth Street properties as protective measure. And I need clarification for that because it's different from what it says in the papers that we were sent. Also, in the document, you also stated that the FTA vibration annoyance criteria of seventy-two vibration decibels would be exceeded at properties within approximately eighty feet of the construction zone. So the duration of these events, you stated that would be short and intermittent, and they would represent a small segment of, of the time. However, we need exact amount of time of how long that short intermittent, intermittent time will be. And we need to know if there are any damages from, um, how much it's exceeding, if we will get compensation for that. I also want to address health concerns. Uh, I'm very concerned about the exposure to air pollutants. We want to know the exact air pollutants that we might be exposed to and how much we will be releasing from the construction. We also need to know if you will be collecting air quality data because you said that you will not be exceeding a certain level, and if we will have access to this data. We also need assurances that, uh, these levels will never exceed those limits because we live there, that's our backyard. We're constantly going to be inhaling that pollution. PM two point five and PM ten, especially a major concern, as well as asbestos and lead-based paint. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Radishram Alatram.
Hi, good evening. Eleven to one oh four fifty-one. I have a two-car garage, I have two antique cars. My garage is full of stuff. I want to know if, I can't put my cars in the street. I would like to know if you guys will put my car in storage or something? And if you could pay me for storage for my stuff then, that I have in my garage? And I have some LED. My mother and my mother-in-law stay by me. And sometimes with the noise and so they can't stay. So I'd want to know if you guys can get me somewhere to put them? That's about, and then I would like to know what you guys would do up there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Our next speaker is Gary Greer.
Good evening. I'm the owner of one oh four oh nine, one sixty-fifth Street. I am the one that you mentioned that would have vibration damage. This is true for all of us. Because when you're saying that you're building a two-story building, wouldn't it be more feasible to buy all the houses that were on one sixty-fifth Street and have just a one-floor building? That would be more, make more sense. And it wouldn't have to be a towering thing because now you're going to lose sunlight, you're going to lose a whole bunch of things that we've had for years. I've been in this property for twenty-three years now. And it's, has always been a pleasure. But, you know, the MTA is not the best neighbor, but it is a neighbor. But when the comment was made about the vibration, I really became concerned. That was in the last half an hour. I don't really know what else. I do know that the compensation is not adequate for what you're trying to do. But as was stated, if, if it were taken as an advance and then later on worked that out, I think we would be more closer to what we need. And that, Tom, is what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Orlando Moore.
Yeah, hello. Orlando Moore, one oh four six five one sixty-fifth Street. From Eastern New York, one one four three three. Um, have some concern. Um, I do have kids. I have, um, six kids that live with me there. And I also have my mom, my dad, and my sisters, them live also. They have kids, so. Um, with this, what's going to be going on here? Uh, we're thinking about a youth stem that'll be growing. So they use the backyard throughout the summer. Um, I do pull up, put up a pool and thing, and they, you know, they have their little time there because I still have to pay my mortgage. So I can't just take them on vacation like that. So that's the fun time when I put a pool up, when I do a little get-together, a little barbecue in the backyard and thing, right? Taking my property away for five feet away, I don't have no much yard space there. So you taking five feet away from me is like taking my whole yard away. And taking the, the pleasure of the kids, them using it and all of that. So what I'm going to do with my kids, them, for the young, number of years you're going to be using, the property, right? And concerning about, this building has built there, been there over sixty, seventy years? Or so, or a hundred, I guess? But with the vibration, I do construction in, in my basement. I do not think that thing would take much vibration. So we need to look into all of that. And, um, I did my yard, uh, my, my fence. And while digging there, it was a lot of moisture down there. So with vibration and moisture and not too good foundation, what's going on? I know it's going to corrupt a lot of stuff, so, you know, um. And I do have a storage back there. And with that there promising me there, it's not enough. You know, I, I, I do not have any more space to put anything in my house. So that's why I have a shed in the back, you know? And all my kids' stuff is there, you know, and all these different, different stuff. So, you know, I'm disagreeing with the offer that you guys give us. And speaking for all my neighbors because we all group up and talk about it. And we'll be discussing more and sharing more to you guys about it, you know? And more, more concerned are my kids, then. You know, what are we going to do about these kids, you know? And not me alone have kids there, the whole neighborhood have kids. And when you're going to move that, you're going to take away parking, you're going to take away transportation, and everything's going to be corrupted in that whole, um, neighborhood there for the time that you guys are going to be using it. I know my time is finished. I have a lot more to say, but.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Our next speaker is Martin Watson.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Martin Watson. I pastor a church called Rose of Sharon, or now called the Vital Church. We're one oh four nineteen, one sixty-fifth Street. All of the comments, all of the things I already said affect all of us. Uh, we averaged out the number of people that would be affected. Roughly five hundred and forty to a thousand people will be affected. All of these areas, transportation, food, safety, security, all of these things affect. We are already shorthanded, and we have service. Uh, my neighbors are gracious, uh, that allow us to park in front of their homes. We will have none of that for two years. And we can't imagine what that's going to affect us in two years. And so we really appreciate if you would reconsider, uh, the method and the offer. The offer is about peanuts. It's really peanuts. That's about twenty bucks a week for what? We'd have to spend thousands to relocate, to park, uh, for the safety and the security of the neighborhood. So I really wish, uh, you would consider having another talk with us, another, uh, planning session. Again, it was already mentioned, uh, we'll have no sun, which again will darken the area and lessen our security and our safety in our community. We have built the community over the years. The average person on the block is twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three years, up to over thirty. Please listen to what we say and don't just take notes for now. Consider that these are lives that will be affected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ronnie Collins.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ronnie Collins, one oh four five five, one sixty-fifth Street. I received a letter in the mail, we all received a letter in the mail, about the reconstruction. None of us are happy. Someone asked earlier, when is the start date? So anyway.
The format of this hearing is not delivered in process. So I did mention it in the script, but it's not taken into account.
All right. So anyway, um, Dolores Sharp mentioned the oil spill we had back some years ago. That was actually not settled because some of our backyards have sunk. And I'm in the process now of getting more dirt from the backyard because of that oil spill years ago. Moving forward, uh, you guys, in that letter was, I felt a little intimidated with the offer that y'all put in that letter. It was extremely, extremely, extremely low. We hoping that we could work out a better plan. Now, speaking of the vibration and the noise and the, and the air quality that's going to come about over the next couple of years, we don't know whether we need to relocate or what, uh, but we need to revisit this, this, uh, decision again and make some adjustments, some major adjustments. Most importantly, those numbers are really not justifiable. And, um, we don't want to feel like we're on the lower end of the stick. Uh, we understand transit is trying to make an improvement. The neighborhood has some improvements. The neighborhood has improved tremendously. We have buildings on Jamaica Avenue that are skyrocketing now. We have more people in the area, which means more money. And there are projects that has started back from South from Boulevard all the way up to 168th Street, all the new developments. And we do understand that the buses need space. And there was one series we talked about a couple of years ago about buying all the properties and give you guys all that space once there's a decent offer. So we want to be satisfied as well as you guys are satisfied. We want to be happy. Otherwise, make us smile, come with a better offer. We want to feel intimidated or insulted, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Our next speaker this evening is Tyrone Green.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Good evening. I remember approximately maybe four years ago, MTA had proposed remodeling the bus depot, right? Invited the community to school in that area. And they presented some drawings and so on, right? But at never any time, didn't MTA mention anything in reference to easement or using their properties from the neighborhood as far as the construction? Following that, I received a letter from you guys July 20th, right? In which basically, MTA outlined a temporary easement proposal. And within the proposal, right away, there was a monetary value, said $2,200 for two years to use your property. That basically runs down to $3 a day. That's what they're offering, myself and neighbors, $3 a day. Also, within that letter, as many of my neighbors have mentioned, the first thing that is mentioned by MTA is eminent domain. So basically, it's an approach in which MTA is offering us peanuts and at the same time is threatening the neighborhood. If you don't comply, you know, we are prepared to take action. As far as the environmental impact, MTA says the study was done as far as the environmental impact. None of the neighbors were consulted as far as how it would affect us. Never did MTA approach anyone living in the street, conducted a survey to see what the neighborhood, you know, what they feel like as far as this proposal and how it would actually affect them. Also, within it, MTA mentioned that they'll be following, they'll be conducting notice in advance in reference to claims procedures on the federal relocation laws and regulations. I'd like to know, I'd like MTA to at least submit or provide a copy of that law, of those laws to the neighbors, right? Even though that's something that we could look up online, right? To really see as far as the approach they're taking. Because as far as studies that I've done on the law, I've seen that it may not be exactly the way how the MTA is approaching. Right? We're looking to have a conversation, we're looking to talk. We're listening to the MTA, but we really like the MTA to listen to us also. We're humans like me and you, live in our neighborhood. We have our families, we work hard for properties. You know, we just don't want it to be taken for granted. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. As we transition to those who are joining us virtually, I would like again to remind everybody, if you have logged on to this Zoom under a name different than that which you registered to speak and wish to speak this evening, please notify our team via the Q&amp;A function. I'd also like to remind those who are joining us virtually that once your name is called, please allow 10 seconds for your microphone and camera to be activated so that you would be able to be seen and heard. Our first virtual speaker is Rebecca Bratspies. Rebecca Bratspies. Okay, we'll come back around to Rebecca. Joseph Attarian. Joseph Attarian. Okay, moving on, Yuki Endo. Yuki Endo. Again, folks, if you're joining us via remote, via the Zoom function, and you have signed on under a name other than that which you registered to speak, please notify our technical team of the name which you are signed in on so that they can turn your mic on for your video. Next speaker, Fay Hill. Fay Hill. Okay, we are joined on behalf of Councilmember Williams by Ashley Meza. Ashley Meza. Martha Tucker. All right, Joseph Attarian. Let's try Joseph again. Rebecca Bratspies. Yuki Endo. Fay Hill. Martha Tucker. Ashley Meza. And Jonathan Artarian. Excuse me? Well, who's controlling the board?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
All right, so we're going to go to Ashley Meza. Can you hear me, Ashley?
Yes, I can hear you.
We can, you can hear me, I can see you, but you seem still be muted. Can someone unmute Ashley?
Can you hear me now? Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. So, good evening. My name is Ashley Meza, and I am the Chief of Staff for Councilmember Nantasha Williams. I will be delivering her testimony on her behalf. I would like to thank the MTA for its commitment to deploying zero emission buses at the Jamaica Bus Depot. These zero emission buses are essential to District 27, one of the communities that high asthma rates have disproportionately impacted. I also want to thank the MTA and the Department of Transportation for listening to the concerns of members of my community regarding the entrance of the bus depot on Merrick Boulevard and not on 107th Avenue. My colleagues in government and I authored a letter on March 4th of this year, and I'm happy to see that the entrance has been changed.
Please slow down.
Oh, sorry. Having the entrance on 107th Avenue is close to several senior and family residences, specifically the Allen Senior Residences. Placing the entrance to the bus depot on 107th Avenue could have posed major safety risks, especially for our seniors and families in the area. This would have also overburdened our residents who are already dealing with other quality of life issues. We thank the MTA for all the things to ensure the residents in Southeast Queens have access to clean transportation and for considering the concerns that the residents have in this area. While listening to this public hearing, I have heard some other concerns from residents that have, such as an environmental impact, the compensation for the repairs, and proposed property changes. I hope that the MTA takes these concerns seriously, and I encourage those in the public to reach out to my office for assistance. Thank you for conducting this public hearing.
Thank you very much, Ashley, and thank you, Councilmember. Over, so please bear with us here in the room. But for the sake of those joining remotely and the technical difficulties, we want to make sure everybody who has registered to speak and still wishes to speak has an opportunity to do so. So let's try Joseph Attarian once again. Joseph Attarian. Rebecca Bratspies. Yuki Endo. Jonathan Attarian. Yuki Endo. Fay Hill. Martha Tucker. Okay, unless the tech team can see that there's anybody else who is attempting to speak, we've gone through the list. And that concludes the public comment here.
If there are no additional public speakers, I'll now conclude this portion of the public hearing. As I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, this hearing will be kept open until 5:30 PM on September 23rd, 2022, for the receipt of a written comment. So if you spoke, if you spoke today, you still have the opportunity to submit a written comment as well for the record. And if there's anyone on Zoom, if there's any sort of technical issues, you still have the opportunity to submit a written statement through the MTA's website. You can also submit a written statement through the mail. There's an address provided in the hearing notice. Thank you and have a great night.